Okay, it's a little past time for our meeting, so I will call this December 17, 2013 Meeting of the Andalusia City Council to order. Now I'll call on Councilman Wells to lead us in our prayer and our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. At this joyous time of year, we want to get the reason that we're here and that we have this season because we're celebrating the birth of the Christ child. We want you to help us to keep that thought in our hearts and minds during this time. Christmas is always a reminder of the blessings we have. And I want to pray for our nation and especially lift up those prayers to those that are serving the defense of our nation. Father, it helps us as citizens to make us our stand, just like they do, and fight continuously for the religious principles on which our nation's been founded. I thank you for our city and our community, and I thank you for those that work each day to maintain it and to improve it. And as the new year approaches, we know there's an opportunity for renewed commitments and for each of us. We've got resolutions that give us guidance and lead us to be a more productive in all our endeavors. As leaders, as community, I ask you to guide us when we make decisions, show us that you're involved in these decisions and that these decisions would be pleasing to you. I pray for harmony and understanding that we all work together to make this a better place to work and live. Father, thank you for the birth of your son. Amen.
Attention, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here with us tonight. We are always happy to have guests and visitors join us in our city council meeting, and we're especially pleased to have with us tonight a group of winners that we'll talk about in more detail in just a minute, as well as a group of workers that have done so much for our community. And we'll take that up in just a few minutes. At this time, we need to consider the minutes of our meeting held December the 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of our regular meeting held on December 3rd, 2013.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting held December the 3rd. Do we have a second?
A second, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 3rd, please indicate by raising your right hand. And they are approved, and I thank you for that. We have no unfinished business. We have several items of new business, and the first two items of new business, I'm going to come down to the front because we've got a couple of proclamations we want to present. And I'll do it from down there, and then I'll, we'll come back and take up the balance of the agenda. Okay, it's certainly a pleasure for me tonight, as the mayor of Andalusia, representing the city council, to recognize these fine young men that are with us tonight. The 11 and under soccer team for Andalusia, who were successful in their season this year. Their, the team members and their coaches are here tonight, and I would like to read out their names and ask the coaches and the players to come forward and line up here. We're going to present this to you, and then probably be some photographs taken. If y'all want to come on up and line up, and we'll read it once you hear. This is a presentation of appreciation from the city of Andalusia, presented to the city's, city of Andalusia's 11 and under soccer team players and coaches. And I'm going to read the names. Logan Adams, Dylan Browder, Reese Burkhart, Hudson Dean, Thomas Duffy, Dawson Kennedy, Ian Martin, Ellis Mount, Wes Parker, James Posey, Brady Sowers, Colin Ward, Griffin Wells, Cameron Woodard, Addison Mount, Dexter Lee, Frank Osorio, Alan Woodard, head coach, Ashton Wells, assistant coach, Dax Kennedy, assistant coach, and Joe Parker, assistant coach. In recognition of your contribution to the success of the city of Andalusia's 11 and under soccer team, the 2013 Alabama Recreation Parks Association State Tournament Champions, witness my hand to this date. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that proclamation. At this time, I'd like to introduce one of our co-captains, Reese Burkhart, and he has a presentation, and he'd like to say something to you and the council.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Reese Burkhart. Speaking for my teammates, I would like to thank you for this proclamation and you recognizing our team tonight. We worked very hard to win this championship, but we also want to thank you and recognize those who worked very hard to give us the opportunity to represent Andalusia and Covington County. First, Alan Bracewell, Captain Caitlin Shipman, and all of our coworkers in the Recreation Department for organizing the city soccer league and running the league. In fact, Mr. Allen and Ms. Caitlin were with us in Dethan to see some, to see us come from behind to win our, in our last game. Without them, we would not have won the championship. Second, council and the mayor, without your support of the Department of Leisure Services and the soccer program, children like us would never have the opportunity to play. Without you, we would not have won the championship. We thank our teachers, principals, who worked so very hard to educate us, and we appreciate them every day. Without them, we could not have won this championship. Fourth, our sponsors, our coaches, and our parents and families, who always support us, give us their unconditional love. Without them, we could not have won this championship. Lastly, thank the people of the city of Andalusia, Andalusia and Covington County, who work so very hard to support their families and raise their children. Ultimately, it is their support that allows us to receive an education, to travel safe roads, to enjoy a fire and police protection, to have electricity, clean water, and to even play soccer. Without them, we would not have won this championship. To recognize all these people who have helped us to win this championship, we ask you to accept this championship soccer ball, signed by all the players and coaches.
Well, thank you very much, and we will, we appreciate the ball, and we'll, we'll find a very prominent place to locate that, and we're very proud of you, and we look forward to many more championships from this fine young group of young men. At this time, I'd like to ask the members of the TNR Committee if they would come forward and stand in front of the podium, similar to what the young men just did. Y'all can if you'd like. Thank you. Thank you, guys. There is not another group of volunteers in the city of Andalusia who work as hard as this group does. And the product of your hard work is something that I'm very proud of. Every year, we look forward to something new and different and fresh, and this year was just a tremendous, so far been a tremendous result, particularly with respect to the cookbook and with respect to the Whoville Parade and the downtown, the lighting of the Christmas tree and all the events that went with that, and all the other great things you do through the year. And it just occurred to me that we ought to say something about that to you in a formal sort of way, and I have a proclamation here that we have framed, and I'm going to present it to you. You can, you can keep it wherever you'd like to keep it, okay? And we, we'd be happy to keep it for you here at City Hall, and we'll, we'll provide each of you with copies of it, but I want to, I want to read this if you don't mind. City of Andalusia Proclamation. Whereas the Tourism and Relocation Committee has served the city of Andalusia faithfully for more than six years, and whereas the members of the TNR Committee have played a vital role in making the city of Andalusia a warm and inviting community to both lifelong citizens and newcomers through countless community outreach projects, with one event which has, has outshined most, the 2013 Whoville themed Christmas tree lighting and parade. And whereas the exemplary conduct each committee member has demonstrated in all capacities has furthered the cause of bettering the community and has been an influence for good in the community and progress of the city of Andalusia, now therefore be it proclaimed by Earl V. Johnson, Mayor of the city of Andalusia, Alabama, on behalf of the entire city council and all the citizens of Andalusia, that we do hereby extend our sincere appreciation to the members of the Tourism and Relocation Committee for their many years of service to our community. Witness my hand this date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. We appreciate that. Can I just say, we just work for the greatest people in the world. We work for Mayor Johnson and the city council. We work under their auspices, and we just have the best support. We work for the citizens of Andalusia, and I can't think of a better place or better people that I'd rather work for than the citizens of Andalusia, and we thank y'all so much. It's our privilege and our pleasure to do what we do. Now, I'd like to announce, Mr. Mayor, the winners of our decorating contest tonight. Rhonda and Savannah Ricks, Kimberly Wilcox, Dr. and Mrs. Aggro, AHS FCC LA SGA, Lynn McCord, and Daniel and Dawn Kate. We just appreciate everybody that decorated and all the work. We had so much help from everybody, y'all. We had all of our merchants pitched in and helped. We had people who, students who got involved by painting all of our windows uptown. We had all of our city workers who did such great, wonderful decorations. We had Roger Powell, who did a fantastic job. Roger La Camp, who did a fantastic job. Dwight Krigger, who did a wonderful job. And my committee, the best there is, just the best. And we thank y'all so much for allowing us to do this.
Okay, again, congratulations to the, to the soccer team, and again, thank you to the TNR Committee and all, for all your hard work and enthusiasm and support of this, of this city. Next, upstairs, we had a report from Pat Palmore, who is on our, is chairman of the mural committee, and she gave us a, kind of a status, a report on all the murals that are underway and some that are anticipated, and it's very exciting to see all that develop. Hopefully, all of the murals affiliated and associated with the Alatech site will be complete by the time the new year is here and part of the, of the event that takes place, takes place after that, associated with the Smithsonian celebration of how we work, and that, that's going to be an important event in Andalusia. And we're just excited about that. Thank you, Pat, and your committee for all you do, and look forward to, look forward to, as we move along on those projects. All right, our next item of business to consider is item 6D, which is Resolution Number 2013-33. There's a signing cost for certain abatement actions that were taken to be assigned to the properties that were, that were, on which the abatement action was taken. These costs will be hooked onto, I guess is the best way to say, or assigned to the taxes, the ad valorem taxes, that will be due next year on these properties. And so when they pay their taxes, they have to pay these costs that the city incurred in cleaning up their, their property. And that's Resolution Number 2013-33.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to 2013-33, the cost of abatement of properties.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Let me, in further discussion, let me just point out that there were five different parcels of property involved here, and not, the costs were not the same on each of those, but close to the same. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? And thank you for that. Our next item is Resolution Number 2013-35, excuse me, 34, which is another abatement. This is actually a weed abatement at 307 Snowden Drive. And this is a piece of property that's owned by someone from outside of Andalusia, and the need, the weeds have grown up on it and need to be removed, so they've been, they've been contacted and not done the work, so we, we need to abate this. So I would recommend to you that we adopt that resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2013-34, placing the property on 307 Snowden Drive in the abatement program for violation of the weed ordinance.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion, Mayor.
Our motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, a Resolution Number 2013-35, which is a resolution entering into a contract with, for a transportation enhancement project for a sidewalk on the west side of town, on the, around, in and around Dunson Street, Snowden Drive, Snowden Drive, and Presswood, Presswood Bridge Road, and also out on the bypass. This will be a contract that will be with the state of Alabama Department of Transportation. We've already received notice that we have, have received a grant. This is the next step in that, working to move forward on that project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2013-35, the transportation enhancement project to execute a contract with Alda, allowing you and the city clerk to sign those documents.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, thank you.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign, and that carries. Thank you for that. Next item is some work that we need to do to have our industrial park designated as an advantage site park in Alabama. And I'm going to ask Rick Clifton, who is the CEO, the president and CEO of Covenant County Economic Development Commission, to come forward and talk to us about that, and then we'll take up some action that I think we need to do to follow up on his recommendation.
Mr. Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this, this evening. Before we get into the advantage site, I want to personally thank the council for their support of the Covington County Economic Development Commission. When I took the job about a year and a half ago, I felt like it was going to be kind of a part-time position, and I'd be able to dabble in that a little bit and continue my law practice, and I found out very quickly that economic development is a full-time job and more, and, but it, it wouldn't be as successful as we were able to do it without the support of the council and the support of the communities in Covington County. So when we, when we go out and we are spreading the word about Andalusia and Covington County, we do that in different venues, and it's expensive to do it. It costs money to do it. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to develop relationships with companies that are interested in relocating into our part of the world. And if we're not able to go to these functions and attend these events, then they're not going to hear about Andalusia. They're not going to hear about Covington County, and we're going to miss opportunities to bring business into our communities. On two recent trips, we met four companies that are interested in relocating. Two of them are interested in relocating into the United States from Europe, and two of them are interested in relocating from places in the United States to Alabama. Well, if we hadn't been in these events, participating in these events, we wouldn't even have known about the companies. We followed through with, with meeting with one of the companies in Europe, and they are very interested in locating in Alabama. And we have been able to present our case as a community because of the support of the council in the past and hopefully the continued support of the council. I saw an article about why Airbus came to Alabama, and what they said is, they came to Alabama because of relationships that they developed with the people of Alabama and the leadership of Alabama, going back to the tanker contract, which Airbus won and then they lost. But it was that relationship that the leaders of Alabama continued that led Airbus to decide to go to Mobile. Well, if we'd have dropped the ball and we hadn't followed through with that, Airbus wouldn't be going to Mobile. So we're trying to develop those types of relationships, and your support helps us do that. It's the support and relationships that we build that brought Say Hey Sun here and led to Say Hey Sun expansion here in our community. It's the support that led to DRS making a tremendous investment in our community, in the rental of the hangars at the airport. And it's also that type of support that has led Vector to not only build a new hangar, but now double and build another hangar at our airport. And it's because of those relationships and because we're able to attend these events that helps us, you know, get the word out on our community. What I've learned also, if we don't do it, it don't get done. And so we are responsible for getting the word out on our communities, and if, without your support, we're not able to do that. I think, I'm talking with the mayor about it, what he said was, you know, if you, if you don't have a hook in the water, you're never going to catch a fish. And with your help, we've been able to put a lot of hooks in the water, and we're trying to reel them in, and it's very important that we have that support, and we appreciate that very much. Not to get off of the advantage site, but that leads me to one of the projects that we're working close with, with the council, with, with Andy and John and the mayor. The advantage site program puts, puts sites in front of people that are interested in locating in Alabama. It's edpa.org, Economic Development Partnerships of Alabama, handles this project. It's a public-private partnership with Alabama Power, Power South, Alabama Gas, NADA, Commerce Department. All of these entities work together to develop a certified advantage site. And what this means is, is that you've gone through all the preliminary work that's necessary to make it a shovel-ready site. What we've found with technology today is that when you go to talk to a prospect, they know more about you than you do. They are up to date as to the sites, as to your community. They know what, what information is coming out on Facebook. They know all of these things about your community, and they know more about you than you do on some occasions. And one of the ways they know is by going to the EDPA site and listing, see the listing of advantage sites. These sites, they could go in tomorrow and start building. So the preliminary work that we've done through Goodwin Mills and K. Wood and Bob Carter, they've put together a package and a engineering package, and they've done all the studies that are necessary for us to go ahead and apply for advantage site designation. About 43 sites in Alabama have been designated as an advantage site since 2008. On those 46 sites, 14 have located projects employing over 3,000 people with an investment of over $665 million. So people are looking at these sites, they're going to these sites, and it's something that, that I strongly recommend to the council, that we follow through, make the application, and, and make Andalusia's industrial park number 47 on this list.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. What we would ask the council to do is authorize us to move forward with this project, to get, get our industrial park designated as a, as a certified advantage site, so that it's on the list, so to speak. As, as Rick stated, many of the prospects who are looking in Alabama will not even look at a site unless it is already certified and listed as an advantage site. Of course, it costs money to do this work and do these studies and do these scientific reviews and things that have to be done. It'll cost us about $36,000 to do that, and we've already incurred a good bit of those expenses, so I hope y'all approve paying these things. And of course, this money would come from contingency because it was not a budgeted item. But I would recommend to you that we go ahead and move forward with this, so we can get this behind us and, and not have to worry about competing with those areas that have sites that already declared to be advantaged and us not have that.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion that we move forward with this, as has been described.
All right, sir. Have a motion by Mr. Wells. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that, too, is unanimous, and I thank you for that. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. I'd like to, like to point out that there's a new, a new publication out called Tourism Resource Guide that will be located in all of the that will be located in all of the welcome centers in Alabama that, that have publications present in those centers. And there's a great article in here about Andalusia. And the inside, inside of the cover is about Andalusia, and then there's a good article in about Andalusia. So this is really big, and we, we'll have some more of these over where our city clerk and city attorney are located. If you want one, you're welcome to take one home with you. Before we recess or before we close our business, there's two people here tonight I'd like to introduce. I know the council knows, knows these two gentlemen, but I want to make a formal introduction. They didn't know I was going to do this, so they'll probably be mad at me. But I want to, I want to introduce to you the, the new interim chief of police for our police department, Chief Paul Hudson. Chief, would you stand and be recognized? Thank you. And also, our interim assistant chief, chief, assistant chief Paul Dean. There is no other business to come before the council tonight requiring any action. I'd just like to say, this is the last, last meeting that we will have before Christmas, and it's the last meeting we'll have in the year 2013. It's almost hard to believe. Two thousand fourteen will be here before we next meet. So I want to wish everyone in Andalusia a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll stay adjourned.